Good evening. I would like to reconvene the Putnam Valley Board of Education Special Business Meeting of August 11th, 2020, following our earlier executive session. And since it is an open meeting, I would ask all of us to join me as we salute our flag, which is down there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands: One Nation, Under God, In This World, Ever to Be Justice, Strong. We hope everybody is having a healthy and safe summer. The first order of business is I would like to report that the Treasurers' Report for May and June are available in the business office. And without further ado, we will go right into our presentations and reports, and Dr. Luft is going to be reporting on our reopening plan.
You want me down here, right?
Yes, Dan.
Here or no? All right. Good evening, everyone. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to go through the presentation that was previously shared with the community along with our reopening plan last week. And then I know we have a list of questions that were submitted by community members during the week, so many of those focus on the reopening plan as well. So we'll go through and do our best to address each of those questions at the conclusion of the report. So the first thing I want to mention is the reopening, the report, or the plan that we created, was really the work of our reentry task force. And this was a group of parents and teachers, administrators, public health officials, our school physician, and others who came together and volunteered their time to first research the information that was out there and to begin to develop contingency plans as we awaited state guidance. The first thing we did was we broke this large group, over 45 individuals, up into four subcommittees: a Health and Safety Subcommittee, an Instructional Programs Committee, Special Education and Social Emotional Learning, and a Logistics Committee. Go ahead, Dan. This thing's not working anymore. Oh, there you go. So as I mentioned before, the goal of the task force was to research all available information, explore all potential options for reopening, and begin to prepare what were the three required plans, which were distance learning for all, the hybrid learning plan, and in-person learning for all. Just to clarify what those mean, so distance learning for all would be a similar situation to what we had this spring when the schools were closed and 100% of our students were learning from home. Although that's the model, the way in which the day would be structured in the fall would look very different to what, the way the day was structured in the spring during our initial closure period. The hybrid model is sort of our current plan moving forward. That would bring in all of our elementary school age students from grades K through 4, and we would split sections and if needed, use large group gathering spaces to accommodate those classrooms. Students in grades 5 through 12 would be in an A-Day, B-Day rotation, with Monday being distance learning for all. The rationale for the Monday distance learning day was to create static days so parents knew which days the students were in person versus which days they were learning remotely and not having a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday rotation continuing for weeks, understanding that certainly presented childcare issues for parents. And in-person learning for all, although it sounds fantastic, does not necessarily seem feasible at this point and is not supported by the guidance we received. We could not do in-person learning for all while maintaining social distancing, and social distancing is a requirement by the State Education and the State Health Department at this time. At the end, our goal was to bring back as many students as was safely possible. We know there's no substitution for the learning that happens within our classrooms, and we thought that it was, it should be our priority to bring back as many students for in-person learning as we could safely do. So our reopening plan is broken down into the following categories. These categories all are taken directly from the template provided by the state. So our plan covers communication and community engagement, health and safety, facilities, child nutrition. So child nutrition would require us to feed students, both the students who are in school as well as make meals available for the students who are working remotely on those days. Transportation obviously presents lots of issues. Social distancing on buses was something we spent a lot of time talking about. Social emotional well-being, I know that our, my message that the focus on social emotional learning would be our first priority was maybe not well-received by some, but I think truly it was really just a matter of communication. The underlying point of SCL coming first is the fact that students must first be comfortable being back in school before they're able to start learning and retaining new content, and that if we were to walk in school the first day when students haven't been in school for over six months and say, "All right, turn to page 26, we're going to start learning new content," that, that would be a waste of efforts because students, if they're not comfortable and not ready to learn, no matter how dynamic the teaching occurring is, there'll be no knowledge absorbed. So there's no predefined time for how long this will take. I know this is something that comes up in the questions, but the social emotional learning piece is really to provide time and flexibility for teachers to build a comfort level with their students, making sure students are comfortable being back in school, understand the safety procedures that are in place, understand the expectations for the year, and really reach a place where they're prepared to start learning. So schedules, we spoke a little bit about the hybrid schedules. Attendance and chronic absenteeism. One of the messages that came across loud and clear through the state guidance is that we are required to maintain daily attendance records for both the students who are in school as well as the students who are participating in remote learning. Technology and connectivity is something we've been planning for, for years, but obviously we need to have an environment that's conducive for the students to participate both in school and at home. Teaching and learning covers all our programs and after-school activities, special education. We want to make sure that our E&amp;L students are being supported and that all of our documentation is being translated before being sent out. And as of right now, the state is still requiring that we follow our annual performance reviews for both principals and teachers. So under community engagement, we covered a reentry task force. We discussed our communications plan, information sharing and training. There's a big focus on providing both parents, students, and faculty with videos and resources so they understand best practices, so they can maintain, stay safe, use of personal protective equipment, identifying symptoms of COVID. So there's a big push to communicate all of that important information out to all constituents. There'll be signage and messaging around the building reminding students of hygiene practices, and obviously I mentioned translation services before. Under Health and Safety, it's obviously a large one, covers all of these topics, everything from identifying students with symptoms, how we respond to students with symptoms, criteria for returning to school afterwards, cleaning, safety drills. Health and safety was obviously one of our primary focuses throughout our work as the reentry task force. Facilities, Mr. Spittle has been working really hard with his team to make sure that we have protocols in place to clean and disinfect our facilities on a nightly basis. That includes buses and other common use areas, as well as ensuring that the usual safety measures, lead testing, fire drills, and other measures are also in place. Ventilation is something we focused a lot on. I know we purchased very dense filtering systems or filters for all of our HVAC systems, and they catch a much greater percentage of materials as they pass through. So it's sort of the highly, most highly rated filter that we can purchase. And the other piece is, we're required by state to provide a certain percentage of fresh air into all academic spaces, and we plan to maximize that intake of fresh air as the weather allows throughout the year. So child nutrition, I spoke a little bit about earlier, making sure that all students, whether in school or at home, have access to an appropriate meal, and how we'll handle the serving of those meals to keep students socially distanced and safe during that time. Transportation, our plan right now is to put a single student per seat, the exception being siblings or students live in the same household could sit in the same seat. We're looking at assigning seats, loading and unloading buses in a specific order. Masks will be required on school buses to be worn by the student as well as the driver and any monitors who may be on the school bus. Social emotional wellness, I spoke a little bit about earlier. It's really just reaching the point to make sure students are comfortable returning to school before learning can really continue. This is just a summary of our hybrid schedule. Elementary school students would be in Monday through Friday. The times are estimates at this point. We are considering shortening the student instructional day, and that gives us more flexibility for arrival and dismissal. We know we expect a greater number of parents to drive their students, so it's going to complicate our arrival and dismissal procedures. So we're shortening our instructional day to provide more flexibility and make sure that students are provided an opportunity to safely arrive and dismiss orderly. Middle and high school, Tuesday, Thursday, and a Wednesday, Friday group. Monday will be distance learning for all. Half the students would be in the building, and students will follow their typical schedule throughout the school day. Chronic absenteeism, again, we're required by state regulations to track attendance for all students, both in-person and remote, and then respond accordingly. So if a student is not showing up in class or showing up virtually, that we would follow our normal procedures and contacting the parent to notify them that the student is missing assignments and missing class time. Technology and connectivity, I know we increased our bandwidth in anticipation of being able to support both the students who are in-person and learning remotely. We were lucky to have one-to-one device initiative for many years, and we're prepared to give every student K through 12 a device to be used at home if needed. Teaching and learning, we've made substantial changes to our continuity of instruction plan. As I mentioned before, whether we continue in a hybrid environment or move to a distance-only environment, the expectations for teaching and learning will be very different than they were in the spring. Students will be expected to follow their typical schedule on a daily basis, whether at home or in school, and that would also include students who opted for the remote-only option. There would be daily interactions with teachers, and we would, the instruction would as closely as possible mirror the instruction that was happening in class. Special education services, we're still required by law to provide students with a free and appropriate public education, and our programs and services are changing as needed. Our CSE and CPSE meetings have moved online, and I know that will continue. And we are, in many cases, bringing in some of our students with the greatest needs five days a week, regardless of which building they're in, to provide them the support they Spiling one world language, we've made sure to translate all of our communications that are going out, and we're working on individualized plans for students who need E&amp;L services within the hybrid model. And then, as I mentioned before, the state still requires us to comply by our annual professional performance review. So just some quick building level information, just another summary of our hybrid model. And then the elementary. Obviously, classrooms and our learning spaces are going to look very different than they have in the past. Some classes will be split sections, some may be using large group spaces. Furniture will be arranged in rows. I know we spent many years getting rid of desks in elementary school classrooms and replacing them with more student-centered ways or furniture for learning. Unfortunately, the situation doesn't allow us to utilize much of that furniture, and it's going into storage, and we are forced to redeploy desks so we can sit students in rows six feet apart. There'll be a mix of, for split sections, will be a mix of teaching and teaching assistant, whether the teacher be providing remote instruction to one class, or they'll switch back and forth between classrooms. As I mentioned before, the student day will be slightly shortened, but students will be in five days a week. Much of the specials are, we're certainly encouraging them to use outdoor spaces as much as possible, but when that's not possible, specials will likely push into the classrooms. This supports the cohort model set up by the state where we're reducing the amount of students in the hallways and transitions of students between classrooms. For lunch, students will be provided a lunch, but will be asked to eat that lunch within their classroom while maintaining social distancing at their, at their desk, but resource will still continue outside, and there'll be a mix of socially-distanced activities and opportunities for students to take mask breaks while outside. And face coverings will be required for all students and staff throughout the school day, and there'll be opportunities built in for mask breaks when we can bring students to large group spaces or outdoors to give them a break from their masks. So picture of what a typical elementary school classroom may look like. So middle and high school, we're looking at 50% capacity, half the students coming in any given day. Again, desks will be arranged in rows six feet apart. Certified teacher will be available for both in-person and remote learning. The schedule broken up A-Day, B-Day. The student day, again, slightly shortened. Specials, in this case, students will follow their typical schedule, so they will travel to their special classrooms. And lunch, students will eat in the cafeteria or the high school. The community lunch will continue at 50% capacity, and seats will be labeled to make sure that students stay six feet apart while they eat. Recession, again, will occur at the middle school, but students will be required to maintain or adhere to social distancing, and again, masks or face coverings will be required. And that's a picture of a typical middle, high school classroom. So parent support is going to be key in order for this to be successful. Last week, we sent out a parent return to school survey. I think we're up over almost 900 responses so far, so I appreciate all those who've taken the time to respond. I know buildings have started reaching out to individuals who identified the request for more information to, that they wanted a phone call. And starting next week, we'll begin following up with, with families who did not respond to the survey. We really need 100% response rate to identify students, whether they be, whether they plan to participate in the hybrid model, or they plan to participate in the remote-only model, whether they plan to utilize district transportation, and whether they have any technology or internet needs at home. Each family will be required to perform a home health screening. So temperature check of the student will be required each morning, as well as the answer to the state's questions regarding travel and other COVID-related symptoms. This will be, the district will periodically request that parents affirm the fact that this screening is taking place, and again, that's in accordance to the guidance that was sent from New York State. The district will also be conducting random health screenings throughout the school day, where our nurse or other professional staff will go into a classroom or get students as they're exiting the bus and perform temperature checks. We asked that everyone take the time to update their emergency contact information. If a student presents symptoms, which if you review the list of potential COVID symptoms, it's very long, that student may be required to be picked up and would be immediately brought to an isolation or quarantine room as they await for pickup. So we need accurate emergency contact information, someone who can get to the school in a timely manner to pick up any students who are presenting symptoms. Obviously, any, we want any children who are sick, with a fever, or presenting any of the symptoms related to COVID to stay home. The expectation in attendance is that students participate in learning, both at school and while at home. So for some, it may be waking up for a 7:50 first-period class while at home, which I know is a challenge for some, but that's certainly the expectation. And we want parents to help us support the distance learning model, help students find a space that's conducive to learning within the house and where they can participate and focus on their work. Student expectations, some ways very similar, attendance, we're expecting students to follow their daily schedule. Grading will return to a much more normal fashion, where numeric grades will be issued to students, so there'll be accountability behind the work. Participation, again, will be required and may affect a student's grades. Social emotional well-being will be our focus when students first arrive to make sure they're comfortable to begin learning, and again, distance learning support from the families So this is from the CDC, one of the posters we're using. It just covers some of the common symptoms related to COVID: cough, shortness of breath, chills, sore throat, loss of taste and smell, muscle pain. And then other symptoms include a long list of fever, runny nose, so on and so forth. So we know right now there's some activities that are still restricted. Athletics are delayed until at least the end of September, but we anticipate an announcement coming in the near future. Large gatherings, as we're in this performing arts center, it looks a little sad. It's normally packed with people, ready for a performance. Those will not be happening at this time. Evening events, back-to-school meetings, conferences will still happen, but likely virtually, and in-person clubs and student activities will not begin, start the school So this is just a summary of the questions that were on the reopening survey. Again, whether or not you intend to send your student back to school, this is a parent decision. Students cannot opt themselves in or out of remote learning, whether you plan to use district transportation, and then whether you have access to technology and the internet at home. So I know there's a couple of things that were just released by the governor, so I wanted to provide an update. One of the requirements shared by the governor was for us to develop and share a plan related to testing, contact tracing, and remote instruction. So we have a draft of that plan ready to go, and I would expect it to be posted by the end of the week. A lot of that work is done in collaboration with the Putnam County Department of Health, and they've been great allies to us throughout this crisis. So everyone can stay tuned for that information, but we certainly have a plan as required by the governor, and that'll be shared later this week. The other requirement from the governor when he announced the reopening of schools was to hold three community meetings and one faculty-staff meeting. So our, we on Monday evening sent out a communication to the entire community. Our community events will be this week. We scheduled an afternoon, so Wednesday afternoon, Thursday evening, and Friday morning. So we hope the change in time gives everyone a chance, who wants to participate, to participate. And that communication went out along with links to the webinars to join and a survey to submit questions before the event. One other item I just wanted to touch related to reopening is, obviously, we want to restrict visitor access to our buildings. So we have a strict no visitor policy right now, unless someone is deemed to be essential or there for a reason, that they will not be asked to, they're not be allowed to enter the building. So that includes parent drop-off and pickups, and the buildings are working on procedures for how that will work so we can safely get students into and out of school. But also related to that topic is tax collection at the district office. And in the past, we allowed individuals to come with cash, and they walked into the office, and they sat there and counted out the cash, and obviously, that is not, that would be counterintuitive to our purpose of limiting visitors. So I would expect more information to be shared, but the district office will not be open for visitors for tax collection, and that we certainly encourage everyone to make their payments via other means, specifically making online payments, and we'll be sure to share information for how that can be accomplished. So I know we have a list of questions from the community. I don't know if the board has any questions, or if the attendees of the meeting have any questions related to this before we go to the Google Doc of questions.
So at this point, we are asking for any public questions, if anybody would like to come up to the podium and ask. If not, we do have a list of questions here, some of which have been answered, Dr. Luft, through your presentation.
I did that on purpose.
I figured.
The, in your, in the more formal plan, the other document that you sent out, there are places for parent training through videos or student training how-to videos, like who's doing those and, and how are they going out?
Yep. So our staff has begun to create some. I know our nurses did an intro, introduction video to some of the other videos. We thought it was important that students see a familiar and a friendly face before sort of jumping into someone else talking about how to properly wear a mask. We're also working with BOSI's. BOSI's is working through their production department to create some of these videos. So we anticipate using and sharing some of the videos that are produced through BOSI's and sending them out to our parents and our students, so they have an opportunity to watch them and understand what the expectations are prior to school opening.
Okay, and I, because in the, in the, in the whole plan about bussing, it, it talks about how to get on the bus, whether it's assigned seats, go all the way to the back, load from the back, unload from the, what, from the front or whatever, but either the bus driver's going to have to explain it at every stop, or it's going to have to be part of the, this is how you get on the bus, you know, with kids actually showing you how to get on the bus.
Right. So from a transportation perspective, right now, our plan is to do assigned seats, and we plan to share communication with parents, identifying which seat their child would be assigned to. So the child will sit in the same seat theoretically on their way to school and on their way home. And likely siblings would sit in the same seat if they travel on another bus for the middle school, high school. And all that information will be shared with parents prior. So a student, when they board the bus, has an expectation to look for the seat with their name on it.
Jeremy, can you go more in-depth on the cleaning procedures, both during the day and in the evenings?
Sure. So the cleaning procedures, obviously, throughout the day, our custodians will be around the building and cleaning. We have wall supplies in each classroom, so teachers and students can spray and wipe down their desks or use the disinfecting wipes if we can, if they're available, to clean the desks in between use. That's really a middle school, high school, where we're sharing classrooms and sharing spaces. So we have ample cleaning supplies. We've partnered with BOSI's and done a cooperative bid with school districts from all over the region, so we get sort of bulk pricing for masks and cleaning, and cleaning materials so to make sure that we're well-stocked. In the evening, our custodians will do a deep clean that'll include wiping down high-traffic spaces as well as cleaning classrooms that they typically do. But some new machines that we got were essentially disinfecting foggers, electrostatic machines, where after they're done cleaning a room, that electrostatic fogger can be put into the room and in 10 minutes will disinfect all spaces. And then as they clean the next room, then the machine will sort of follow them down the hallway. So to give us the ability to disinfect every classroom, all spaces, each evening. We also have Clorox 360 machines, so those are more like, almost like power washers, but they shoot out the same type of fogging cleaning material. Those are reused more for school buses and other large group spaces like that to spray down any high-traffic or common-touch areas. And we also have, we'll be creating, keeping a log, so as the custodians go through each of these spaces in the evening, they'll be logging that that space is clean. So if we want, if we had it, we could always go back and audit spaces to make sure that all spaces are appropriately cleaned each evening.
Is there somebody from the audience wanting to come up? Come on up. How are you?
How's everything?
Good.
Just want to elaborate on some of the questions.
Just want to elaborate on some of the questions, some of the things you were saying. The testing you said is up to the parents for temperature testing. Why is it not being tested when they get off the bus? Let's say a parent had a rough day, there's a lot on their mind, they're late for work. Shouldn't it be the responsibility of the school to make sure that kid doesn't enter the school without a fever or without being checked properly?
Sure.
Because in all other buildings that I go to where I work, they check us as we walk in. Why are we not doing that?
Sure. So I can answer the question. The, the state guidance actually recommends that the screening be done at home. And I think part of the issue is the sheer number of individuals, how long it would take us to temperature screen every student, whether they're being dropped off by a parent or arriving on the school bus. It's, it's a sheer numbers game in terms of how many students, how long it would take for a student. And it could take us over an hour just to get students into school, which would obviously not be very conducive for the learning. If it took, and the other fear is as students line up waiting for their temperatures to be checked, they can't possibly maintain social distancing. So if I need a couple of seconds to scan each kid, as 22 kids are getting off this bus and 20 kids off this one and 20 kids off this one, I now have 60 kids waiting in a line, I can't possibly keep them six feet apart waiting to take their temperatures. So that's one of the logistical challenges that we faced. The other concern is that if students, we only check temperatures during the, during arrival, that if a student is, had taken Tylenol or something prior to, that they could not display a fever when they arrive at school. And our plan to do random temperature screenings throughout the school day would hopefully make everyone aware that just if a child doesn't have a temperature in the morning, doesn't mean they won't in the afternoon. Or if they did take Tylenol or some kind of fever suppressant in the morning, that it could be back in the afternoon. So our goal is, we still want to screen students, we want to make sure everyone's safe. We want to empower parents to be our partners during this. But we also want to make sure that we're maximizing our instructional day and that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that parents aren't simply giving their children Tylenol in the morning so they pass the initial temperature screening and, and knowing that they'll be clear for the day.
Okay. And another question I had is the testing. Now, you said they're going to be isolated. Do we have a rapid testing system that we're going to test the kids? Is it going to be up to the parent to test the child? How does that go? If a kid says, hey, I feel hot, maybe he had a fever that day. Now the kid doesn't have the fever the next day, the parent sends him in, doesn't have a fever.
So, there's, school districts do not have rapid testing systems. It's, it's impossible for us to, one, get certified as a lab to administer them, have the staffing to do the nasal swabs or to even procure the materials. I know hospitals are struggling to get those materials. So I, I think what the governor said was maybe unintended, but what the plan is for testing is obviously we encourage parents to bring their children to the primary care physician if they have one who's available. But the Putnam County Health Department is offered and willing to partner with us to help find a testing site to ensure that any student who needs to be tested can receive a test. And no matter where you go, the testing is always free, there's no expense for the testing. So we're willing to partner with families, if they don't have a primary care physician, if they don't have access to them, they can't get to them. They need an alternative testing site that will work with the Department of Health to make sure that every student has a testing site. In terms of the students who are symptomatic, it's, it's unfortunate, but it's going to be a very challenging piece of our work. If a student has a fever and leaves school, you're right, that fever could be related to 100 things, not COVID related. But until they've been cleared by a doctor and that symptom has resolved itself, we can't allow them back to school. And we're following the guidance by the CDC and the Department of Health regarding reentry of students who are symptomatic. I have concerns about students have a runny nose, right? There's probably a million reasons why you have a runny nose, not related to COVID. And I don't necessarily want to force every kid who has a runny nose to go home and their parents to pick them up. But right now, that's the way, that, that's the standard we're being held to in the guidance. I'm hoping that there's some leeway, that the state will allow us to make a determination for who has to go home and who doesn't. But right now, the threshold is any symptom and the student has to be sent home. So my fear is our elementary school might be empty during the runny nose season. But we're hoping for additional guidance from the state again to allow our healthcare professionals to make a determination whether a symptom could be related to COVID or is a pre-existing health condition that the student has. Because once you're out, the process to get back in is, or requires a doctor's visit and a note and the student to be asymptomatic. So I know that's a challenge to working families.
And God forbid a child does get sick, or will they be granted leniency? As in, I had family members that were ill and they were down and out for two or three weeks. I can't see a child getting, if they're homeschooling or video zooming, getting on a computer with 101 fever. Is the state going to allow us leniency in those cases?
A hundred percent. We wouldn't want any student who is feeling ill and at home to feel obligated to participate. When the student feels better, we would do everything in our power to catch them back up on the material they missed. But it certainly wouldn't be an expectation for a student who was homesick to continue to, to participate in class. And I would say the same is true for our staff. If I have a teacher who goes homesick and they have a high fever, I don't have an expectation that they're laying in bed teaching their class either. We'll find a substitute, a lead replacement and another, a colleague of theirs to cover their class so the students don't miss any instruction. But we certainly would take all this into consideration. If a student was sick, we want them to focus on getting well and not on academics at that point in time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one question for a neighbor. Um, bussing, um, some of these buses were extremely full last year, prior to this. A bus normally holds 48 children, especially in elementary, two kids per seat, up to 48, 50 kids. If we're going one student per seat, how is that going to occur when some of these buses are going to have more than 22 kids? Are there going to be two bus runs to that location?
Okay. So in the middle and high school, half the students will be in any given day. So that automatically reduces our, so elementary school. So for elementary school, we're doing many things. One is we are increasing the number of bus runs. We typically had 20 bus runs for the middle school and high school. We dropped down to 14 for the elementary school. So now we're planning to mirror the middle school and high school runs. So we're increasing the number of buses, which decreases the density of students on the buses. The other piece that we're taking into consideration is part of our survey asked parents whether or not they're utilizing transportation. If a high enough percentage of parents responded, yes, we're using district transportation, it could have forced us into a split, like two bus runs for the elementary school. But the numbers of parents who are identifying that they want to drive their students to school are so high, I don't believe it's going to necessitate us splitting the elementary school. If the numbers required it, we would. I would bring in a K-2 run and then send the buses back out for three, four and stagger their days. But if I could avoid doing that and get everyone in at once with no more than one student per seat, each student will sit in their assigned seat against the window, so the furthest point away from each other, with the exception being if they're sitting with a sibling or someone they live with. And we, we can, we can get everyone in safely with one student per seat with masks on by maximizing our bus routes and based upon the participation.
Thank you very much.
All right, no problem.
Janine, do you want to do the, the parent, the specific parent questions?
Sure. And, and some of them have been asked, but I'll just, some of them can just be quick. How often are bathrooms, both communal and classroom, be cleaned? And I think you said every day.
Yeah, so bathrooms will be cleaned at least twice a day. And that's at least, I mean, as, as they go around the buildings, they can certainly go in there and wipe down high use areas, but they certainly will be cleaned at least twice a day.
And this is an interesting question and, and some of these may also happen with the principal and some of the other meetings. But in regards to recess in the classroom, kids usually share toys. How will this be handled? If toys are used, whose responsibility is it to sanitize these items? Is it the recess monitor?
So we, we want to limit sharing of materials as much as possible, but in a public school, that's certainly not possible to eliminate any sharing of materials. So it would be an expectation for whatever adult is supervising those students to wipe down any shared equipment. Recession is the example, but the same would hold true for equipment in a science lab, physical education equipment, anything of the sort that needs to be shared. The expectation would be that the equipment was wiped down before another student used it.
And at the middle school, I mean, I'm just adding to this. At the middle school level, isn't that something we could encourage and teach our, our students? Because they're going to be having to manage themselves in the world.
Certainly.
For outside recess, will kids have access to the big toy and who maintains the sanitizing of it?
The big toy will unfortunately be closed during recess.
Next schedule in reg, the next question I mean, in regards to schedule, for the middle school, it says 60 minutes and 40 minute blocks. Are these for different grades? Will seventh and eighth graders be switching classrooms? If so, will classrooms be cleaned in between classes before another group comes in? The same for encore classes.
So the 40 minute, 60 minute switch is the new high school schedule, I mean, the new middle school schedule that was built in collaboration with the building administrators and with teachers on that committee. So that's the schedule that students were going to follow this year pre-COVID. So it's going to be the schedule that they're going to follow post-COVID. So students will be moving between classes. And there's, we'll be cleaning materials in each classroom for desks to be wiped down, whether they be wiped down by the teacher or by the students when they arrive. But certainly materials will be available to make sure that those shared spaces like desks can be sterilized between use.
With the days now shortened by an hour, will that affect the instructional time requirements students need? And can something in the presentation or document highlight this?
So although we're shortening our student instructional day, I would certainly would hope that the state would come through with some flexibility in understanding the circumstances that schools are in to open and not discourage schools from physically opening by limiting the number of hours. But I would consider that extra hour to be an opportunity for asynchronous learning activities. So our teachers will still be there, they can still be supporting students, they could be working on online resources. So I personally consider that last hour of the day to be asynchronous learning time and therefore would not impact our instructional hours.
Will middle school, high school have access to lockers? And if not, are kids required to carry all their materials for the full day?
So locker use will be limited. Only students who have special needs or physical disabilities or reason why they need a locker would be assigned lockers. But it would be impossible for students to socially distance while at their lockers. And the little secret is none of them use it anyway. Except for the store like yesterday's baloney sandwich.
Or 47 sweatshirts.
For the rest of the school year.
Or every hoodie they've ever been given by their parents that all come home on May 15th. What are the steps that, that are taken if a, again, it says a staff member's child, but if a child, whether in district or out of district, is sick and needs to leave school?
So if a teacher's child were to become sick, it would be the same procedures we would always follow. We would expect the teacher to go pick up their child and we would find coverage for that classroom. Coverage would likely come internally first until we're able to get in a substitute, unless there's a substitute teacher in the building. But that would stay, that procedure would stay the same. We have been proactive in reaching out to all of our substitute teachers. We've actually had an overwhelming response rate of teachers who, substitute teachers who plan on returning. So over 90% of our subs have said they, they would still be willing to come in and substitute for class. So that's been very promising. And we would handle it like we typically would.
Also, if a child seems to have the symptoms for COVID and they need to go to quarantine, how will that student get to? Is there a quarantine room or the nurse?
So each building has a designated isolation or quarantine room. If a student is sent down to the nurse's office with symptoms, the screening of that student would likely occur outside of the nurse's office. We would not want to bring a symptomatic student into the nurse's office where we're dealing with cuts and bruises and other non-COVID related issues. So the screening would likely take place within the quarantine room. And if necessary, depending upon the age of the student, certainly we would ask an adult to escort the student down to that space.
And these next three questions are all related to walking through the building with, with possible symptoms. So keeping that social distancing, possibly escorting them.
Can I give the same answer to all three?
Yeah, they're the same. I think you gave the same, all of these questions are more or less the same, so. That's all that we have so far. Have we gotten any more, Ms. Bolino?
In the meantime, I have a question. We've all seen the photographs out of Georgia in the hall room, hallways of the Georgia High School and the outbreak or the mini outbreak, nine students are tested and now they've closed down the school. I'm wondering about traffic flow in hallways. If they're, what the plan is for traffic flow and the timing of releasing of classes? And if it's going to be kind of counterclockwise and you don't go across, all kinds of things. I would just wonder if that's been planned yet.
Yeah, and those details are being worked out sort of as we speak. We've spoken about traffic patterns, some districts are splitting the hallway, so right side goes one direction, left side goes the other. Others are designated hallways for one direction. I think it'll be drastically different just with 50% of the students being in school any one day versus what it typically would look like. But we are talking about things like staggering dismissal from classes, increasing the amount of time between classes, not to hang on the hallway, but to allow us flexibility in dismissing classes by group or by grade or by hallway in order to limit the number of spaces. There's no getting around the fact, when students are transitioning in the hallway, there's going to be students that are within six feet of each other. What, that's something that we can't possibly prevent. But what the, the requirement's going to be is that all those students are wearing a mask. So if they have a mask and social distancing is not being maintained, if as long as everyone has the mask on, the students are still deemed to be safe during that time. So we certainly don't want students hanging out in the hallway and we certainly don't want students taking their mask off in the hallway. But during any transition time, it'll, I mean, it's physically impossible to keep 250 students six feet apart. But we're going to do everything we can to limit traffic, to control the flow of that traffic and to enforce that students wear masks while in the hallway.
I feel if there were a couple more questions, they were kind of hidden.
I, I got a bunch of other ones too.
There's one here, which I don't think we've touched on, about BOSI's tech classes and how will they be transported if it's a day they have remote learning?
Okay. So, yeah, that's my first one. I actually have a transportation meeting tomorrow morning. I know that we'll obviously transport our BOSI students to BOSI's like we typically would. The details of that plan are still being worked out, but the district is prepared and, and willing to provide transportation for those students who need it to participate in their BOSI's program. The frequency of those and the details behind it are still being worked out, but that'll certainly be shared with those families. I, I had gotten a bunch of questions about if there would be a remote learning option. So those questions were probably submitted before. But obviously the, the district is prepared to offer a remote learning option for any parent who wants to opt their student out of attending school. And the information I have is in accordance with the state guidance, that remote learning will include the student following their daily schedule. It'll include daily interactions with teachers. And to the extent possible, will as closely mirror what's happening in the classroom as makes sense educationally. So, and attendance will be taken for the students participating in remote learning, just like it will for the students who are participating in in-person learning.
This question just came in. If a student is not allowed to attend school because they're presenting COVID symptoms, would they be able to do virtual learning until being cleared to go back to class?
Certainly. For a student who is out for any reason, as long as they're healthy enough to participate, they would certainly be encouraged to participate in the remote learning option.
And I think you, there are a few more, it was kind of, the document's a little uneven. But you did answer this, is there a choice between children attending school or learning online? So your whole presentation pretty much indicated yes?
So I have one about the details about student pickup and drop off. Again, mostly an elementary school issue and those, they're being worked out, the details are being worked out now. As I had mentioned, mentioned earlier, there'll likely be a bus dismissal time in which students who are riding transportation will be dismissed. And then a parent pickup time following that. We can't possibly accommodate a parent pickup at the same time we're doing bus dismissal. And it would be sort of anti-mission to reduce traffic in the hallway if we're dismissing students by grade level to buses while dismissing individual students to their parents' cars. So I just want to be honest and open that we'll have staggered dismissal times for students, especially the elementary school, for students riding the bus versus students that are picking up their children. But the children will be supervised within their classroom during that entire dismissal time. So they're not going to be put into a large group space with other students. They'll be in their classroom as they await their turn for dismissal. be in their classroom as they await their turn for dismissal.
Elementary school students noting that behavior in general with regards to personal space, hands to yourself, et cetera. Would a child be disciplined for moving within social distancing boundaries? If so, how would they be disciplined? And will students who cannot maintain social distancing and mask guidelines be suspended from school?
Yeah, principal to answer that question.
Is there a principal in the house?
Is there a principal in the room?
I won't do that to you. Listen, I think our first and foremost, our mission is to make sure the student understands why they're being asked to wear a mask. Obviously, students come at a wide range of individual issues. Or things that we need to deal with. And some students physically cannot wear a mask and we have to develop plans for those students. So I'm certainly not going to focus on what the punitive piece would be, but the expectation is that the student would wear a mask. Our primary goal is education, so we would educate that student why wearing a mask is important. We would certainly escalate it to clinical staff members if needed, the building administrators if needed, we would involve the parents if needed. But certainly, wearing masks for students who are able to wear masks is a non-negotiable and it could ultimately lead to consequences if a student refuses time and time again to obey the mask policy.
Couple more specific questions about asynchronous versus synchronous and the Monday day, Monday virtual day. Is this meant to be live classes with students logging in? Or will there be more asynchronous? That's a tough word, learning on Monday.
So at this point in time, the Monday distance learning class, the students would follow their typical schedule and would check in with their teachers during that period.
And when the students are not in person at Putnam Valley Middle School, will they be logging into the live classroom, teaching and following along? And yes, you had already indicated.
Same, yes. Those students would follow their typical schedule.
How will a child be provided with extra help for schoolwork?
I'm not sure if it's during the school day or after the school day. I think the way we would deal with children and address issues, learning issues, we would remain the same. I think we would find opportunities to work with children. It may be remote, it may be virtually, or it could be in small groups in person. But obviously, we're going to work with students at their level and provide them whenever we possibly can to make sure that they are being successful.
This question deals with the concern of the twice-a-day bathroom cleanings provided ample protection. I have a thought of how to answer that. Do you want to answer that?
I mean, I just noted that bathrooms will be cleaned at least twice a day. Obviously, all bathrooms will have soap and water available, along with hand sanitizer. I mean, the primary risk still remains sort of person-to-person contact, which masks should prohibit. And the second most common cause would be sort of exposure to your hands and then getting it in your mouth or your eyes. So that's why the importance of washing your hands thoroughly and the importance of us making sure that students understand why that's so important have to be a focus of ours when schools reopen.
And this question's regarding lunch. Clearly, students cannot wear masks at lunch. Will there be setups allowing for enhanced distancing?
So the elementary school students will be eating at their desk, which will be positioned in their classrooms at least six feet apart. There may be opportunities whenever possible for students to eat outdoors. And in the middle school, the new cafeteria, social commons, learning commons will be complete for the opening of school. So that gives us ample space to spread students out six feet apart while they eat. In the high school, the community lunch will continue, obviously at fifty percent capacity, and students will be spread out throughout the building. And they're still working out the logistics for what grade levels to be where, spread out around the building to maintain social distancing during lunch.
All right. This I don't think we've addressed yet, the question of contact tracing and notification. How are contact tracing in the event someone does come down with COVID-19 and what is the notification process and timeline to alert other parents whose children has, have been exposed? Will it then be expected these children need to quarantine?
So we, obviously, we defer to the health department for contact tracing. The expectation is sort of within that first twenty-four hours. The CDC guidance requires us to close down the space, any potentially contaminated spaces for twenty-four hours. So in my mind, that starts the contact tracing clock. And we would work in collaboration with the health department to make sure they had all the information they needed, who were the students in that classroom, who could have potentially been in the bathroom at the same time as a student, who was on the bus, who did they sit next to? All of that information will be tracked for students throughout the day and we'll have that available for the health department to help them with any contact tracing need.
There's, there's more of a comment regarding, are we going to do some kind of preparation for kindergartners entering school who have not been in school for a very long time? And will we be incorporating fun and relationship building into this new stressful environment for our grade K children?
So Dr. Pedesta and Mr. Chickory are obviously working on kindergarten orientation plans. I know it looks very different to what it has in the past, but we certainly need to provide those students an opportunity to become acquainted with the building, meet their teachers and be comfortable before all the other students return to school. So that will definitely happen. And if that communication hasn't go out, I would expect it in the near future. And of course, our kindergarten teachers are still kindergarten teachers and I'm sure they will do everything in their power to make students comfortable in safe and effective ways.
Community members asking what the results of the survey are at this point. How many high school students are actually coming? How many middle school and how many elementary school?
How many?
I don't know.
I can give you percentages. Close enough?
But gone.
So, I mean, the breakdown by grade level, I don't have. So I can give you, I mean, I don't easily have. So just for, so I'll give you the overall percentages because that's probably what makes the most sense. The buildings have the individual breakdown. I mean, obviously, there's a spreadsheet, but I would need time to analyze the almost nine hundred responses by grade level. But the quick answer to the, maybe the most pertinent questions are currently seventy-three percent of families have identified, so it's families, not students, this would include multiple students, one family. Seventy-three percent of families have identified that their students will in fact be returning to school. Twelve point six percent of families have identified that their students will not be returning to school. And fourteen percent of parents identify that they were unsure and, please, and ask the building to contact them. So that individual contacts have already begun to take place. And as the building contacts, the person answers any questions they have, they then ask them to commit to whether their student will be returning or not. So the initial survey results are sixty, seventy-three percent yes, twelve percent no, and that fourteen percent unsure, but that they're moving to one side or the other as the phone calls are made.
And as we get closer, to be clear, this is, there needs to be some sort of documentation from parents that their child is either opting, is opting out or opting in or both.
Yeah, we're definitely going to need to identify each student within our student management system as either an in-person hybrid or a remote learning student, so the teacher knows who to expect physically in front of them versus who to expect online. Though there certainly have to be a way for us to identify the students within our student management system. And there obviously will be communications with parents setting the expectations, both for parents and for students. I know we're working on creating, Ms. Masretta's working on creating a student expectation document, which will be shared with families. And maybe that's a way for us to sort of get the written confirmation of they understand what the expectations are for their students. The other important piece is that for those who are opting out of in-person instruction, that we're asking that commitment to be made for the first semester. It's just impossible for us to plan for educating the students that are here if students are in and out on a weekly basis. So our expectation is for students who are opting out or doing so for their first semester, we'll certainly reevaluate at that point in time, which is around January, and then provide people who choose the opportunity to return to school that opportunity in January. If parents have concerns about in-person instruction and want to move their students to remote, that, that would be allowed. Obviously, that would be a parent choice and they can make that choice at any time.
I think all of these you've covered. One is, can you just double, clarify the mask rules? This parent says at one point it said they will be required and at another point said they were recommended, so.
So our district policy will be that masks will be required for both students and staff, unless a student is eating or the student, or it's an opportunity for a mask break.
With distance learning.
Yep, so teachers will be providing periodic opportunities for mask breaks, either in large gathering spaces or outdoors where students could increase the social distancing between them and make sure students are provided ample opportunities for breaks.
And this question deals with, I guess the question, disciplining for moving within the social distance boundaries. How are teachers going to handle that if they can't maintain social distancing? Will they be suspended?
Suspending a lot of kids tonight.
I know, I know.
I think that's the question you just, I found on the sheet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It means my expectation that all adults within our buildings are working with students to ensure that they're obeying social distancing and the masks. And the same rules would apply for any other student who is disobeying school. And the code of conduct would still be in place, whether students are remote or in person, they would still be subject to the code of conduct.
Community member wants to know, has a decision been made as to which students will go on which days for the middle school? If so, is it strictly doing it based on last names? And if that's the case, are you looking at one range of letters for the entire middle school, high school campus? Or will it depend on how many students are within each grade within that last name range? Example, A to K could have a high number for one grade but not another. How is it being balanced out?
So I don't think I'm disclosing any secrets. I apologize if I am. So our first group of students, the grouping will be the same across both buildings and there's a very specific reason for that. So there'll be an A through K group and L through Z group. The reason for that and why it's consistent across grade levels is we wanted to have the opportunity for older siblings to be home with younger siblings. So if you have a 10th grader and a 5th grader, that 5th grader may need a little supervision and encouragement through the day. And so the 10th grader will be there to do it. Some may argue, if you have a 12th grader and a 5th grader, you may need the 5th grader there to keep an eye on the 12th grader. But either way, siblings would be home on the same days, hopefully easing the childcare needs of parents.
And Ms. Maureen and Jeremy, if I missed any, because there were a lot of lengthy questions and I think we caught them all, we have three days of pair meetings as Dr. Love mentioned in his presentation. You'll go through these tomorrow and make sure they were addressed or will be addressed in those presentations.
And we'll be creating a Q and A, right? Well, we'll be memorializing all the Q and A.
Okay, great.
Yeah, just come up to the mic, sorry, just so people at home can hear you.
It may be a very, very important question and everybody wants to hear it.
No, you, I kept hearing the mask breaks. Would seventy-three percent which are opting in, that's quite a large number. How are you going to do these mask breaks? And how many teachers are going to be there to watch these students with these masks, especially with the elementary, not so much with the older kids? But you're going to have a kid, as we spoke on the phone, they're going to go home with a Spider-Man mask and leave with a Transformer mask. So how are you going to stop that? And how many faculty members will be doing these breaks?
Right. So I anticipate the mask breaks happening within their classroom. So classrooms really are only, we're talking twelve, sixteen students. I mean, I guess depending upon the grade level and the size of the classroom, it could be a little larger at the elementary school level. But the classroom teacher would bring them to pre-designated spaces. Those spaces would have pre-marked out areas in which you would sort of assign each student. Once all students were in those spaces, then they would be allowed to take off their masks. The teacher can maybe come up with a fun activity, play them a song, do something to keep them occupied and to give them a break. Obviously, whenever possible, you want these to happen outdoors. We plan on taking the top field at the elementary school and marking it out for, so multiple classes can use that space at any given time, to sort of have circles in the grass painted six feet apart, so a teacher could simply bring their class out there, get every student into one of the pre-designated circles and then have the students take their masks off. So it'd be a class-by-class thing, so we weren't talking about large groups of students at once. And it would happen in spaces like the auditorium, the gym, the cafeteria, and in pre-designated spaces outdoors. You're welcome.
All right. So Dr. Love, you'll be doing that again three more times this week?
If I have a voice left, I'll try. I'm just looking real quick, see if there's anything else.
And we do encourage parents and family members to attend those meetings, ask any questions they may have.
A survey was included in our communications, so I would encourage anyone who has a question to submit it and to notify us which meeting you'll be at. And we'll do our best to address all of those questions as they come in. Unfortunately, we expect a large number, fortunately, we're expecting large numbers of people. Unfortunately, it makes it challenging to have multiple people ask questions in real time over a Zoom. So we certainly are encouraging people to submit their answers beforehand and we'll answer the questions live. There'll be opportunities for parents to chat in questions during the meeting as well. But obviously, the more questions we can get submitted beforehand, the smoother it'll go and we'll avoid a couple hundred participants on Zoom trying to talk at the same time.
Great. All right, certainly not the last time that will be a conversation, not even the last time in the next twenty-four hour period. The next report, Dr. Love, is you again. And it is Facilities Capital Project Update.
Okay, so I just want to take this opportunity to provide a quick update on the facilities project. I had sent a message out at the end of last week, providing an update on the status. It's unfortunate, it's a very exciting time for our school district with this construction project going on. And it's, it's obviously taken a backseat to the COVID health-related issues and the reopening plan. So we thought it was important to send out a separate communication to highlight some of the work that's being done. Our middle school, which was receiving a majority of the work, remains on target for a substantial completion prior to the opening of schools. Myself and the members of the board did a quick tour of the facility this afternoon and they're hard at work trying to get that space open and ready for students when they return on the eighth. There'll be some punch list items that they'll have to finalize afterwards. Some items with delivery delays will be installed later, but the substantial completion we expect to be done, the spaces to be clean and safe and open for students when they return on September eighth. For anyone who drove down Pisco Hollow Road in the last couple of days, you may have noticed the Health and Wellness Center is beginning to take form. The steel arrived last week, late last week, and the crews immediately began erecting the building. So if anyone drives by, you start to see the frame of that facility going up. It still remains on time for substantial completion right after Christmas, although I'm secretly optimistic it'll be earlier than that, just don't tell the general contractor. And that space, again, we expect to be open for the second half of the school year. Our elementary school work, much of the HVAC, heating and cooling work has already been completed. The crews are now focusing on the new STEM lab and that space is also scheduled to be complete prior to the return of students. So lots of exciting stuff going on in a typical year. There probably would have been more updates, but our minds have been elsewhere. But I did want to take a quick time, a quick minute to talk a little bit about the project and I hope that some are excited to see it when they return in September.
All right, I don't know if there's a public or any other public comment on any agenda items. So let's move right into new business. And are we going to try our usual order? Everyone, you got this?
Yeah.
Okay. So that means, Mr. Farrar, you'll be starting us with number one.
It resolved upon the recommendation superintendent schools. The Board of Education hereby appoints Dr. Latisha Payne as a middle school assistant principal in the middle school assistant principal tenure area to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective September third, two thousand twenty, September second, two thousand twenty-four, an annual salary of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Dr. Payne holds following certifications: New York State School Building Leader, New York State School District Leader, Special Education K-12, and Secondary. Education Case Twelve, and Secondary English seven through twelve.
Second. Questions or comments?
Uh, Dr. Payne comes to us after serving as an administrator in the Rice City School District and a longtime middle school teacher and teacher leader in the Austin School District. Um, she rose to the top of a very rigorous interview process. Uh, we had hundreds of applicants, uh, for the position. Uh, we screened almost twenty applicants, brought back four finalists, and Dr. Payne certainly impressed both the presentation and the interview committees. Um, she got an extra round of interviews, um, with myself and some cabinet members, and again, continued to impress. And I know prior to this meeting, met with the Board of Education. So we are thrilled to welcome Dr. Payne aboard.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was getting, are we going to make her come up and do that?
Do what? What is she going to do?
What?
What does she do? Wave? You can wave.
Just wave. That's right. We can't shake hands.
You have to wave to the camera.
Oh, we can't shake hands. I don't like COVID.
Next time, if you can't shake hands, you have to make a speech.
I think a dance. Okay. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Susan O'Connell as the CPSE chairperson, a point-two FTE position for the twenty-twenty dash twenty-one school year. This assignment is in addition to her full-time assignment as a school psychologist at the elementary school.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Eileen Bloom to the position of driver education in-class instructor at the rate of forty-five dollars per enrolled student effective for the twenty-twenty twenty-one school year. Ms. Bloom holds certification as a New York State Department of Motor Vehicles Driver Education Instructor and as a New York State Teacher and Administrator.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to award Tony Point Heating and Cooling LLC a vendor contract for their proposal as per details listed in RFP two twenty-twenty dash twenty-one dash two, permitted for HVAC, that's the heating and ventilation system, master plumber at a hundred and ten dollars and sixty-three cents per hour with the option to be renewed annually following the increase for local twenty-one plumbing union.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Whereas due to the threat to public health caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic, the district is required to comply with executive orders promulgated by the governor and directives issued by the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Education Department, which may be inconsistent with the district policies and administrative regulations. And whereas during this period of time, to the extent that any district policy or administrative regulation is inconsistent with the executive orders or directives of the Department of Health, the State Education Department, the district will be operating in accordance with those orders and directives as well as the district's, district's school reopening plan, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one reopening plan, adopted pursuant to such executive orders and directives. Be it resolved that where any provision of the district policies and or administrative regulations in conflict with executive orders, Department of Health, State Education Department directives, or the opening, the reopening plan, they are temporarily suspended the extent necessary to comply with such executive orders, Department of Health, or State Education Department directives, and/or the reopening plan.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just to summarize, it means if the state issues an executive order, it supersedes any previous, uh, guidance that they provided us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Whereas a March fifth, twenty nineteen memorandum from the State Security, um, Education Department of New York titled School Security and Door Hardening detailing that the Office of Facilities Planning has permitted temporary covering of vision panels in classroom doors in an emergency. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education hereby authorizes district, district employees to cover door vision panels when necessary to ensure an adequate safe zone within school buildings in the event of an emergency. Whereas in New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code and New York State Education Department Manual of Planning Standards Established Standards, Standards Established Standards Regress from School Facilities. And whereas a March fifth, twenty nineteen memorandum for the State Education Department of New York titled School Security and Door Hardening detailing that the Office of Facilities Planning has permitted faculty and staff to temporarily block doors to show that, to slow the access of an intruder in an emergency. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education hereby authorizes district employees to temporarily block doors to slow the access of an intruder in an emergency, so long as the means used to block the door do not require any special information or ability to allow egress so that occupants can leave the building quickly in such circumstances.
Second. Questions or comments?
Again, it's a lot of words. That just means we can put something up over the glass window in the event of a lockdown and that we can barricade a door, uh, if needed in event of an emergency without violating any building or fire codes.
And, and maybe hope we never need to do either of those things.
Could have been written a lot simpler, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved, I, resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools that school taxes be extended against the taxable property of the towns of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland, as appears on the tax, tax lists hereby are levied. And be it further resolved that this board executes warrants on August eleventh, twenty twenty, for each of the towns. For the town of Putnam Valley to be effective September first, twenty twenty, in the amount of thirty-three million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and nine less dollars, less star, as per document number thirty-three slash twenty-one attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. The town of Carmel to be effective September first, twenty twenty, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and three dollars, less star, as per document number thirty-four slash twenty-one attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. And the town of Cortland to be effective September first, twenty twenty, in the amount of four million, two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, less star, as per document number thirty-five slash twenty attached to the official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office. That these warrants be for that portion of the district lying in the towns of Putnam Valley, Carmel, and Cortland. And the collection period ends October thirty-first, twenty twenty. That said warrants be delivered to the tax collector of Cortland and Putnam Valley. And be it further resolved that the collector may make no changes or alterations in the warrant or rolls, except as provided in sections five-five-one through five-five-eight of the real property tax law, and shall issue tax statements and make collections pursuant to the applicable provisions of the real property tax law.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve consent agenda items two through ten as presented to the board at the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving agreements for students with special needs at some schools and at some colleges and to some private people. We're approving, uh, the meal program that was discussed earlier by, uh, Dr. Love, and we're setting the prices for what lunches and breakfasts were cost. We're appointing Jill Figarella as our health compliance officer. We're approving a short-term substitute for this fall. We're approving disposal of the wooden chairs that were used in the auditorium at the elementary school, which we no longer need. We're approving additions to the extended year substitute list. We're approving summer work for a staff member, and we're approving some translation work for staff member, Ms. Dr. Doherty.
And I had, and just one other question in, in terms of the translation work. What that raised for me is, it just reminded me that our ENL population is growing in our district, meaning that many more of our community members and parents are, may not be English-speaking or English-reading. So I guess my, my comment is, Dr. Love, can we, can you discuss in September, what's our ongoing plan? Like, I notice you send so many communications out, I don't see them in Spanish. I don't know if they're going out in Spanish somewhere. What's the procedure and plan for that? Um, this kind of kickstarted an idea for me, so.
Right. So families who complete the home language survey and identify Spanish as their primary language at home, they get separate communications that are translated, sent directly to them, um, where English-speaking parents would get the other message. So it's something we've really tried to make a concerted effort to do a better job with this year, and especially throughout the closure period and reopening planning for next year, uh, we're really trying to emphasize that. So we're continuing to refine our processes in-house. And this is, um, Mr. Hogan is one of the individuals who helps us translate. We may be adding others to this as well, because we're really relying upon our professional staff and teachers to help us with the translation. Uh, we use web-based translation, but you always need someone, uh, who speaks the language to, uh, review it before we send it out.
All right.
And I have noticed that many more of our messages actually are going out in both.
Okay, great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic. I'm an upkeepper of the public comment.
Uh, the first one is relate, they're all related to the reentry again. Who will monitor mask breaks and where will they take place?
I think I addressed that, uh, large group gathering spaces and outdoors, and they would be supervised by their teacher during those mask breaks.
Next question is, why is elementary full-time and what could potentially cause the entire school to shut down?
I would say there's many reasons why the elementary school is back full-time. Uh, the first being, um, socially, uh, I think those students benefit most from being physically with their teacher. I think, um, from a maturity standpoint, those students are less able to participate in self-directed learning. Uh, so they require more, um, hands-on, real-time assistance from parents who, or other adults that are home who may be working themselves. And it obviously presents the greatest childcare issues for our community members, uh, because elementary schools, children, uh, for the most part cannot stay home by themselves. So I would say those are three of the many reasons, but three important reasons why we really strive to bring back all of our elementary school students. There was another part of that question which I forgot.
What would potentially cause the entire district to shut down?
Um, I mean, those decisions are made on a case-by-case basis in collaboration with the Department of Health. It would depend upon, um, the number of people infected, uh, the level of protection that was exhibited, the number of individuals who were exposed to it. Uh, I would say there is many, many, uh, things that are taken into consideration before that decision is made.
Uh, the next question, you answered, I think, the first part already. First part of his question was, at what point would school be required to go to a hundred percent distance learning, which I think is just what we answered. Then next question would be, how many kids would have to test positive to say, close down the buildings? Um, then the second part of their question is, at what point do kids get sent to quarantine if and when another kid in the class tests positive? Such, do they have to be within a certain distance from that child to be at risk? Will their siblings in another school building then expect to be quarantined? And will the kids in the siblings' classes have to quarantine?
You're going to have to break those down one at a time.
Yeah.
It's about quarantine and exposure.
There's a lot of it. So I, so I know the first, there's, I don't have an answer for number of infected individuals to shut down a school. Um, the governor would ultimately make the decision if schools were ordered to return to distance learning across the state, although certainly if, um, local, uh, infection data necessitated, schools would have the ability to go distance learning themselves. But, um, I don't have a set number that would depend upon, again, many factors in collaboration with the Health Department, um, regarding the infection rate of our immediate community. Um, the students would be sent to the quarantine room anytime they, um, shown any symptoms related to COVID, and that's, those symptoms are all included on that slide. Uh, the quarantine room would simply just a space within the building where the students would stay until the parents could pick them up or the emergency contact can pick them up. Uh, and then they would be required to see a physician before returning to school. And there was other ones.
I think.
That's it?
Yes.
There is a one-off question that's not about the reentry plan. They just would like to know, how does the school psychologist that just was appointed as a CPSE chairperson, um, handle doing that position with the other full-time job that they're doing, especially during the pandemic time when students need psychological, psychologists to do counseling and be present in classroom?
During the school day, their primary responsibility is to be a school psychologist. The other work is done, uh, in off-hours.
And it is a point-two position. I don't know if we clarified that in the appointment.
But it's not, we're not taking, it's not a point-to-release.
It's an addition, right. Okay, at this point, I'd like to resolve to reconvene an executive session for one matter related to a particular corporation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Stay safe. See you soon.